We'll call through our, the, recognition of the city council on this Monday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, about thirty P M. We stand for the place, uh, in our play. Count the favor, would he hear it?
Glad to be just to the fire of the United States of America. Each of the great father, like to stand as one nation under, even if it's one, the guarantee of this department.
I'll call police and folks.
Councilor Proctor?
Room.
Councilor Miller?
Yeah.
Councilor Bieber?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Joey Leeswell?
Yeah.
Mary Howard Quon.
Okay, item four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion when you approve the agenda.
My city.
Councilor Proctor?
Aye.
Councilor Bieber?
Aye.
Councilor Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, hang on right there, just one question. Yes, sir. Joey, do you need to tell us anything?
Mayor members of council, this has been a work for design to replace the sewer line crossing the Joeloff Bridge that we lost during the flood. We've already got it put back together temporarily fixed until we can get this line bit.
Is this money gonna come out of your one forty's?
This comes out of my emergency fund and then if we're gonna find it on FEMA, we just send you five to check here and most of the hook them.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
My city.
Councilor Proctor?
Aye.
Councilor Bieber?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is public comments. Do we have anyone, a citizen, that would like to address the, uh, his entire entirety, not his individual?
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Wayne Williamson and, and I'm gonna be real nice. I want everybody to be excited. I'm gonna be real nice, but I probably need to go for three minutes if it's okay.
Well, I can stay with it if you can. I'm getting.
Oh, it's all right. I'm trying really hard to stay with it.
Okay, so we'll, uh, I'll act like I don't see the exact.
I'll bring, sounds good. Uh, first thing I'd like to talk about is this twenty six thousand dollars for the bridge, or for the water line. Uh, Terry and I, by last meeting, I told him that if you've ever been a mechanic long enough, you know that it takes mechanics straight down, it's engineers stupid mistakes by some of those barriers they put up. And I'm sure Joey is smart enough to, to draw a picture where it should be, where it should go, and he's already fixed the back. He said, I think that twenty six thousand could be used to help citizens. That being done, I called, uh, W G and asked for a meeting this morning, uh, before the, uh, council started. Cause I asked him if he would get with Phil on your, and try and talk me out of suing. And, uh, cause I don't want any more trouble to the city. But I'm not, I, I got a certain problem that's been bothering me for twenty nine years. It is for having to fix, and I'll spell it out, Real, Real Salt. To about twenty five or thirty years ago, whatever it was, well, we, we protested because, uh, the, everybody knows Black Widow, who that was? Oh, really? They don't refer real name. But she had that water line right at the end of our street. And, uh, she, uh, that was, yeah, that's it.
Sure, I'll tell her, you know.
She got permission from.
Hey.
Which is, I don't understand. Put up that wall and fill in that ditch. They, basically, that land belonged to the city and was stolen. There's no, there's no lease between the properties at all. And that, they, like, this is our street coming around like this. There's a ditch right here, but it stops right there. And there's an eight foot wall there, eight foot wall here, and they fill in that ditch in, and run the river. Now, that has caused, that has caused, uh, everybody on my street just about, uh, we're going back, you know, victims, you know? It is so strong, it knocked down about two thirds of that wall. Now legally, I don't know whether you can do anything about it, cause it's long ago, time running out, I'm, that's, but there's one thing you can do. You can stop it being rebuilt and tear down the rest of it. That you can do as a city council. I know that for a fact, you know? If you don't, then I'll, I'll have to sue, cause I definitely go through another flood like this, you know? But, uh, like I said, I don't want to cause any more trouble for the city, cause the city's already up to his eyeballs in, in stuff going on. But the wall I'm talking about, the guy that was on this side, on my side of the wall, uh, asked it if the hose, he was cutting the bottom of it to let some of the water flow through. And he was told, uh, very politely, give us your facts, uh. And, uh, just the other day, Joe told me, uh, the man said he was rebuilding the wall and, uh, wanted to know if Joe paid for half of it. Now, that's about the most dang goal I've ever heard. But I know for a fact that the city, you made me tear down that wall, cause you made Joe do it. You got that, see, see that wall? You made him take out the lower rocks, remember? I don't know what he did, but.
On Joe's backs?
Yeah, I tell him. That little single, like, three foot wall he had in front, they had to take it out in the third or fourth. Uh, brick, brick, I will lock.
Cause if they let him put up an eight foot one?
No, no. It was the Black Widow that put up the eight foot wall. She went along in front of her house and she stole the property.
No, Tom approved it.
And, and it was approved by our mayor, or he, at that time, he was the mayor, I take it back, he was the code enforcement. And he gave her permission not to do it. And, uh, all, every street on our, every house on our block would not got water in a house, not one. If that wall hadn't been there. And the city, you know, I was free then, and, uh, you know, I want toward it. Well, we don't have to be flooded again, we've lost two B Hs. Told, I lost two long bush poles. We had mud in the house, and he didn't walk outside hardly about one to knees in front of the yard. But I, I, I think the city owner considered, I'm out, I'm trying to help some of the people in the city. Yeah, and I'm somewhat worse off than I am. But anyway, you guys decide what you want to do about that wall and let me know. Cause if you won't do it, I'm gonna strike the law. And I will sue the city for, by only for not being tear down the wall. I'm gonna sue on behalf of everybody on that damn wall.
Can, yes, sir. Can you give us just enough time while we get Joey down there and let him get a plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
There's, Mayor Councilor, there's nothing I can do that's above me that, uh.
I know, you know who I'm talking about.
Seen the wall, I know what it's talking about, it's been there for twenty, thirty years. And if I could do something, I would, but my under time, you know, I need somebody above to tell you.
Yeah, this city council can do it. I know, cause it's, it's a lot of ways to go for it, that's okay. You can't find one part of it where it's approved, but it's being taken right away, away from the city and put an eight foot wall up. And that cost everyone on our block to have water in their yard, if they didn't have it in their house. And then the, the man, the undedicated God, after he told him to go, uh, screw himself, that ask, to come and ask him if he paid for half of the wall and put it back up.
Councilor Proctor?
So, yes, uh, all that, I think the man's gonna probably have to get a permit to rebuild his wall. And if does, then that's when the code enforcement and the city stipulate that you will have, uh, so much, so high, so wide, to let the water flow through.
That ain't good enough. Cause, cause we, cause our, our neighbor Joe had it, and the water was so bad, he blew the whole damn wall in. You know, that, that wall needs to come, either down there, or if you want a fence there, put a pipe rail fence.
Yeah, it's gotta have something where the water can go through.
Yeah.
And, and online, when they had, when they had that flood in online, the same thing happened, and they went down and asked them if they could, if they could take bricks out, build that wall, so it went through.
But that's.
And it wasn't always like that. Yeah, but that didn't.
Thank you, thank you.
We're waiting for our three minute.
Okay. I'm, thank you, Mr. Lee. For that, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Leeswell has joined by V F O.
Okay.
Councilor Leeswell, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Anybody else?
Anyone else from, uh? What do you think, state your name, please, sir?
Yes, sir, my name is Tony Marcus. And I'm here, uh, on behalf of many families here, uh, that they have been affected by the flood. And before I get into it, I would really like to say the thank you to the city council for everything that you do for this, and also for everything that you do for the citizens. So, thank you for that. On that note, we do have, we're coming forward to see if you could help some of the families that have been affected by, by the flood, uh, since last year. We are concerned for, from what we've learned, there are single wides that are allowed on the other side of U S seventy. The only thing with that is that these families wanna get away from the river, not get close to the river. But we also know that there's no double, uh, single wides allowed on this side of U S seven. So, with the cost of land and a double wide, well, the cost would be too high for these citizens. For example, we have family Fernandez, that they haven't had a home since last year's flood. And they could afford buying land here in Riddell Sodowns, but to buy a double wide, that would be just too much for them. These are hardworking citizens, they're good citizens, and they don't wish to leave. We also have family Mendez and their family, they're all in the lobby right back there. But they're also, and they have a single wide, ready to move.
All right, excuse me, this is when, Alex, or something you can do that? Cause that comes from the Leeswell residence or what? Cause it's bothering more than just, just me.
Councilor Leeswell, can you put your phone on mute? Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yes, sir, all right. We also have family Mendez, they, they also have a single wide, or they already have it, I'm sorry, and they're looking for land. But since there's no single wides allowed on this side of U S seventy, well, it's hard for them to buy land. And we also have family Nevadas that is here also, which is also, they are also affected by, by this, so.
If you, if you hold yourself.
Okay, yes, sir.
Councilor Proctor?
No, I don't, uh, I don't know where you got the information from, sir, but I don't believe that's true, uh, that's a, uh, that's correct. On this side of seventy, on the south side, we, we don't, there's no restriction on single wides.
We talked to planning and zoning last week, and they said that there's no double wides allowed on this side of U S seventy. Single wides, single wides, I'm sorry, single wides.
There's no ordinance.
There's nothing, there's nothing, no ordinance that I know of. I've tried to read through all of them, I can't remember all of them, but there's no restriction. The only place I know there's restriction on single wides, then the subdivision. And those over there have to be double wides. Cause I lived over there and I didn't, you know, I didn't want to buy big, but I understand where these people coming from. So, if you, if you will give me your name and number, I will leave that for this meeting, and I will check this out for you, we'll find out, and I'll let you know the truth behind that, okay?
We would really, really appreciate.
Well, that's, well, that's, that's what the guys have let you before, that's what I'm gonna do.
Thank you very much.
Now, I think if I'm remembering way back quite a few years, there used to be a restriction on date how old the single wide.
Yes.
It's, and that, that may be what, uh, you're not understanding or could be given, but, uh, Council Proctor will find out.
Wow, that, that would be a great, great, thank you very much.
Jeanette, Jeanette will explain it to everybody and somebody will get back with it.
Thank you, really appreciate that.
Councilor Miller?
Well, I do remember one time, they said if a single wide, if you pull out a single wide, you have to replace it with a double. I remember that was, that's probably the ordinance she's looking at.
And we had something about, that happened in spaghetti class, remember about the single wide?
Yeah.
And that's why I'm not gonna say yea or nay, cause I don't know.
We need to check into that for a bit.
And, and if it is the case that there's only double wides allowed, if you could please, we would request if you could please talk at city council to see if, at least for a couple of years, allow single wides to be able in it. Uh, the year, well, we can manage that, but.
Because of the disaster.
That's.
Well, sir, you're, you're doing the right thing, because it's so easy, uh, to get rumors and stories and secondhand stories. Uh, this way, you will know what is accurate, because the city council will bring you, they'll, they'll bring you the correct information.
Well, thank you very much, I really appreciate you guys' time, thank you.
I'm sorry that I, I'm like.
Thanks for coming in.
Did you start off by saying you called planning and zoning and they said no?
We actually came here to planning and zoning, checking as old as hell.
Okay, that's curious, because when they put the single wide in front of somebody's front, in their front yard in front of another house, we had this same discussion, and there's no ordinance against single wides.
We don't think, but we'll check on it. The, well, we're not gonna put your feet to the fire in there, we'll check on it, make sure.
Councilor Proctor?
The only thing, the only thing is, in Z and committee, approved the HUD stuff, so. How old it was, and they took it all the way back to, I think, seventy six or something like that. For, to me, that's a, that's, that's a little bit old, uh, to be kind of, a little bit old, that, old like that, no, that's, that's something that might have been talked about. But you'll get your people's name and their phone numbers, and I'll be, I'll check on this tomorrow, and I will get back to you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Another, another thing we can check on here is, uh, the city has to be very careful. Because so many people don't understand that, they say, well, you don't help us, you don't do anything. You can't take public money, taxes, and give to peo-, uh, people of, of private, in other words, private property. We can't go improve, uh, can't even go on it in a lot, a lot of cases, so. A lot of time that causes hard feelings, we're limited, or we. That's huge, and this type thing.
Awesome.
Well, we have a lot of people just say, they don't care about us, no, we're going by maybe state law. Councilor?
I just, Joey, is there, do we not have any FEMA trade department set down?
Yes, sir.
No?
Well, we appreciate.
Somebody will get with you, I promise you.
Very much.
Councilor Miller, did you have something?
No.
Councilor Proctor?
Well, I'll, I'll get with them tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, thank.
Leave your number.
Thank you.
What's the course for some?
I'm gonna need to go to the, I'm making.
Thank you, thank you.
You want else want to address the governing body? Please state your name and, uh, address your concerns to the entire group, not individuals.
Okay, my name is Josie Zapata, and we are also experiencing flooding happening. Um, we live on Hill Drive, um, right at the bottom of Turkey Canyon. So, all the water that runs out of Turkey Canyon hits us directly. Um, we've been experiencing flooding since last year. And just here recently, it's been really bad, um, we haven't had any help, we've tried to do things on our own to revert the water away from us, has not helped. Um, they're supposed to bring in the baskets to help us, but we're not even sure that that's the solution.
Yes, that's not a real deal.
Yeah. Um, so we're kind of at a standpoint, we're not sure what to do, but I'm not sure if you guys were even aware. We were flooding, yes, we've been.
We talked about, okay.
Um, they've been very helpful trying to help us, um, they check on us every time it rains, but we're kind of, we don't know how to go. So, I just wanted to make you guys.
What do we need to do, Joey?
It's very complicated, because the service reservation, and piece of pride. Privates already said that they would allow N R C to do something to snow it down, to prevent it. We haven't got nobody to do none, they were supposed to be there today to do something.
Yeah.
Maybe by the end of the week, they're talking.
Right, so we filled out forms to get the baskets, it's probably been over a month. Didn't hear back, I finally made a Facebook post, just because I'm trying to get help, I need help. And.
Heard about it today.
Oh, good, yeah, I mean, it really blew up, and I mean, I've had a lot of people reach out, but nothing telling me like, okay, here's help, we're gonna get it to you today. And so, um, they reached out to us today saying they were gonna give us the baskets, and they were gonna go out and do it today. And then I got a text saying, well, maybe later this week, we have to work on figuring out where all the utilities are, that sort of thing. So.
Yeah.
We don't know what's.
And who was this?
Um.
N R C is.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to make you guys aware, I mean, we need help, we need heavy equipment to either move dirt, I mean, I don't know what.
I'm like Miss Miller, Joey brought me up to speed on it today, he was telling me about it. And, I mean, is all I can do is get with him whenever we're through and see if we can make a plan.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a solution right now, so.
That time it rains, pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, or to the point where we can't even live there, because it hasn't gotten inside of our house, it floods all around us, I mean, we have kids, we have animals, like, I'm not comfortable saying, dangerous.
Right.
And so, we just need help, we need help. So.
We'll get with Joey, Joey will get back to you.
Councilor Proctor?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, if you, if you'll check with our P and Z right here, uh, tomorrow, I guess they're going to close. It's see, uh, Jeanette or Carlos, and they're, they're, what it is, is to start the damage process. Okay, what's the damage process, you turn the paperwork stuff in, it's out of the city's hands, no one here can really tell them when to do it and how to do it. They come in at their timeframe, and I have, I hate to put it like that, but we can jump up and down, we're not gonna get anywhere. So, basically, if you piss the dog off, it's gonna bite you. Make these people upset, they're not gonna jump through boots. And we're on the low end of all the flooding, we get just as much as anybody else, and, you know, and so, if you, just check with the P and Z, if you don't get help from them, that man right there supervised the city.
I, yeah, I called and left a message, but we just don't wanna get forgotten about, I mean, I understand, but there's.
It hasn't ruined, you, you're just worried about the water coming to you, we need to get it away from us.
It has gotten inside our house yet, but it's gotten very close, and it gets worse every single time.
Through in our garage, forches.
Our garage, our yard is a disaster, we didn't think that that happens again, like, our fences are destroyed. And it's not like, we have kids, they start school soon, it's not, we can't, every time it says it's gonna rain, jump up and leave, you know, it's, it's, we can't live our life because of this.
Well, we're in it also, very difficult.
I get it, and I.
Situation, if you don't believe that, that's the racetrack, they thought they had it fixed.
Oh, I know.
And, uh, that's, that driver, when it does decide to get upset, um, sometimes it's nothing's gonna stop it.
Right. Right.
But we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
And what else, anyone else would like to address the governing body? Okay, that's, for the next agenda item is, uh, councilor's comments, councilors? Yes, sir.
The FEMA hips with their single wides, and I don't think any city or government entity has the right to tell you or say to you that you can't put their, their mobile home in a single wide on any property within our city limits. Now, on Parker Lane, uh, Parker Road there, left side, they have a FEMA truck right there for, uh, River Lane and Parker Road go. And that's area down there is flooded up there three times now. And those people have damaged and washed their homes and all that. But if, if you don't have a place to live and you, and you need something, you contact FEMA, and I hate putting it this way, they're not gonna move as fast as you'd like for them to move, but they just, they don't. Uh, getting help from them is, is, it's a tough job. And there's always so much that we can do, we can't take our equipment from our public works and go in and have it remove mud or any kind of debris from your property, because that's, that's going against our ordinances. And so, uh, if we'd done that, we'd have to do everybody's, if we don't have a department big enough, keep, even if we had the state come in and help, they wouldn't have enough to do it. So, there's laws up to, to, to prevent us from doing that. And if I, if I could do it, if the council could do it, if Joey could do it, we'd do it, but we can't, it's against the law. And that's not an excuse, and it's not what you wanna hear, but that's what we're. But we will support you in any way we can, we can get you to places to get clothes, get food, things of that nature. But we can't put any kind of equipment on your yard or pick up any of this debris you take off your property and stack it in the side of it, they have to, they'll have people, somebody's been dead of. And, and, uh, there's areas that hit worse than what we are, and they're cleaning them up, and they're coming this way with it. They get here out of the, I have, I've seen, I've seen a lot, I've seen a lot of you cleaning up, not fast enough. Better with us, we'll try to do the best there with what we've got.
Okay, next item on the agenda is mayor's comments. I would like to, uh, uh, read a letter, uh, from Lucifer Light, uh, one of our citizens of the city of Riddell Sodowns. And it says, Dear Mayor Holman, I'm writing you this letter as my official resignation as both chair and member from the city of Riddell Sodowns Planning and Zoning Commission, effective July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. It has been my pleasure to serve the city of Riddell Sodowns on the planning and zoning commission for, I think, fifteen years, and that would be about, I'm not gonna read anymore, but, uh, uh, this, this member of our community has done a tremendous job, and yes, I think for about fifteen years. He has volunteered his time, he is, uh, very well versed, very intelligent. And, and, uh, with the planning and zoning, you need that, because the city can get into trouble, uh, for one thing, but another thing, you just, you need people that, uh, really know what they're doing, can keep us out of lawsuits and this kind of thing. So, I did wanna mention, is that if you know him, or if you don't, you see him, thank him for his fifteen years as a volunteer. And in the meantime, I'm gonna beg him to reconsider. I just don't wanna let him go, and if I have to beg, I will. He's just been that good, uh, with the big plan of planning and zoning. Another thing, we have, uh, Nan Isom. Okay, Nan Winter, I want to introduce her, she is, uh, new attorney, she's temporary, uh, 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 and, uh, she comes from the municipal league recommendation. She's well experienced, has a great background, and, um, she's with the, of firm out of, um, Alperki, a large firm, and, um, she will be representing the, the city, the city of Riddell Sodowns is who she will be representing. Uh, Nan, did you have any, anything you wanted to say? She's attending.
Uh, just, thank you, um, I will do my best to catch up, get to know each one, to be a little bit better, understand your ordinances, uh, make a few recommendations in the coming weeks and months. Um, please feel free to reach out to me, I think most of you have my email and my cell phone number, I can make that available if you don't have it. Um, feel free to reach out if you have questions or concerns. Um, I think I have a few tasks already on my desk, uh, and I will do my best to turn those around. Um, and again, I will probably reach out to each one of you, um, in the next week or so, just, uh, see what else I can do, um, and how I can help. Uh, I also wanna let you know, I do travel quite a bit, so I, I do travel down to Los Cruces, um, twice a month. Uh, travel to Aztec, New Mexico, twice a month. My goal is to come see you personally, um, probably at least once a month. Um, but we can talk about that and what you expect. Uh, again, feel free to reach out if you have questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you, Nan. Okay, next item, uh, on the agenda is a public hearing. I'll see what I can do, our, our, our former attorney, the, the public hearings. But we are gonna have a public hearing, uh, and so, uh, I will read the item, uh, to you. Item A is application for rest, restaurant B beer, wine and spirits liquor license. With on premises consumption only with patio service. Name of applicant is Los Agavins Redoso LLC doing business at House Agavins Restaurant. Located at two-six-one-eight-five U.S. Uh, Highway, Suite D-one, Redoza Downs, New Mexico, eight-eight-three-four-six. And, uh, counselors, uh, we'll let the city clerk explain this, or if you need any, any questions answered.
You open up the public, Mr. Mayor?
Uh. I told you all the one. That that city attorney usually does, it's yes. So having read that, uh, we will open up to the, uh. Uh, to the public for questions or comments, if you would, uh, come forward and. If you do have comments or questions on this particular item. And come up and state your name. Okay, we will close that to the public. And we will open to the city council. Counselor.
I make the motion to approve. Application for restaurant B beer wine and spirit liquor license on premises consumption only with patio service. Name of applicant, Los Agavins Redosa LLC.
One second.
We had a motion in a second.
Counselor Miller, uh, Counselor Crawford, Counselor Baker?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Lee, aye, motion carried.
Okay, so that, uh, we will close, uh. The, uh, public hearing, and I would entertain a motion for the council to vote. The agenda item. Question roll call.
He's loaded on.
We just, okay. We're just.
We just said, we just said that in the discussion.
Okay. Yes, counsel.
I would like to backtrack a second, that was possible, we didn't call you on your last letter. His resignation.
Uh, I'll give, I'll give the floor to you. And let you get that, and again, I'm, I'm gonna ask him to stay, uh. He's gonna be hard to replace. Very hard to replace. So, yes, we'll get that sorted. So, uh, that'll take us to new business. Number ten, no business, um. Resolution twenty-two-five dash thirteen, a resolution approving final budget, uh, budget adjustments. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Our finance director will, uh, give you the information on this.
He's a very good one.
And she's attending. We'll zoom, that would be Mary Cussonator, Mary, are you there? Hello, Mary. We can't proceed, we, we're gonna have to get her online. She had her own way.
Her, she's, you know, she's been there. And I think she's a very important.
Well, I'm there here tonight, since we've got a couple seconds still. I really appreciate you, uh, coming and, uh, and expressing the concerns that you, that you've had, for those of you that did some. This is Mary Cussonator, she's our finance director of the city of Rito Sedans.
Good evening there, council. Before you is the point for budget adjustments. And I would like to let you know that all of the departments within the general fund, it's stayed within their budgeted amount. Um, I can row down these, uh. Section by section, you tell me what you want, then we'll discuss.
Very nice.
If it's, uh, two feet, it's the, yeah, it's a small. Mary, has anything changed to the, the adjustments? These are just the adjustments. And all of these. So most of these that you start with ten-four. Or ten-five or ten-six, these are all expenditures, and so, on the expenditures. If you, I, I moved money because their lines were in the red, so I just moved money around. I took money from a line that was in the black and looked it up to cover the red, so that it made it a clean, uh, budget. I didn't, on, on the general fund, I didn't change any of the bottom line as far as expenditures, however. In the police department, you'll see these changes on the side, and that's. In the mid, it's like number seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven. You'll see those huge credits because there was a large amount of expenditures in there that were not spent. So I just literally reduced the budget amount because it weren't used, everything was posted, nothing was used, I'm just reducing the budget, I'm not changing. Any of the expenditures that occurred, I'm just reducing these amounts in there that were not used. So we all know that the police department were short-staffed, and because of that. They had an extra three-hundred-and-eighty-two, seven-hundred-and-two thousand dollars that they didn't even use, so all I did was go in and reduce those expenditures. Did you have any questions on that?
Yeah, I, cause I was just talking to the police department two days ago, and they were wanting money, and now.
So when I, when I present you the final, there are some, there's a couple of changes I need to make that you guys will have to approve, and one of them is without P D. But we'll discuss that during the final budget. Okay? And realize the budget, the adjustments that I made on the budget, it's not changing the ending cash dollar. It's just changing the budget, because when we presented budget, we're, then it's. We don't know exactly, we're estimating what the expenditures will be, what the revenues will be. And so, a lot of our revenues were up, uh, with all these changes on the top. Um, and then the change in the expenditures. I did, I did have to increase the, uh, transfers on, on page two, I did have to increase the transfers. For general fund museum because their expenditures for the utilities were more than what we estimated it would be. So I did have to increase that in order to, to make sure the fund stayed in the black and was not.
Is that because it was the E O C last one? During those time, Asher?
Yes, we had extra, uh, utilities that were used for FEMA, I think.
They had the E O C rolling.
Yes. But it was two thousand dollars that I, I don't work by. Um, and then on five-twenty-eight, you'll see there are credits here on expenditures that were, were not spent. Um, that's reducing the expenditures within the budget because the monies were, again. This is just the budget, it doesn't have anything to do with that.
Number one-twenty-three. Is, it doesn't say, it just says L-two-hundred-five-five-two.
Yes, so, that's a grant. And they didn't spend, all that was posted in there, they had that much sitting in there that was unspent. So I, all I did was reduce the expense. Because it was not.
You need me to teach you how to spend money too?
We call this, we're with Bill Rhodes. We're working on spending, but I haven't.
He did spend, he just didn't get to all the projects. Any other question?
New Mexico math, L-two-hundred-six-nineteen, for two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand.
Don't think he started though.
All of the old numbers are E O C grants, we don't know. Probably have started again, we got still some business from the old guy. Pine Springs, North Central.
Is this something we're gonna be in fault of if we don't get ours?
We're doing, we put it in the budget and we didn't get to it to do it, so it rolls, yeah, we change it back to zero the next year.
Any other questions?
Counselor Crawford, then, we're not, we didn't get any grants because our audits have been turned in.
We, we received that money.
So we're not gonna lose no grants?
Not that we're, not against budget.
But for that grant and truck and three-point-two? For these guys? Because our audit's not in?
Three-point-two.
Yeah, they've got three-point-two million, or three-eight.
Anything about that?
Probably done with Brent last year.
Two hundred thousand, I know.
No, that was, that was pretty hard.
Okay, yeah, I don't know about what you're talking about, you don't put that money in the budget until we get signed documents saying that it's. This is, this is the year ending six-thirty, forty-five, this is the danger, this is not what's coming, just look fast.
I still wonder what happens.
You absolutely, how else may I help you?
Outlet Museum, two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand.
Where is that?
Number fifty-four. Second page, Capitol Outlet, twenty-two G T, two-eight. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so on that museum, isn't much gone?
Well, that is, that is the remaining money of the design that was unspent, that I'm rolling.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-four.
That's what we got left out of the nine-hundred thousand, no, we still got that?
We still got another five, six, ten, on top of that, waiting to go to destruction.
Yes.
That's just what's left, you know, this is ninety.
Okay. Unity rollout, is that a, a?
It is. So on the community rollout.
It's on the last page, number thirty-seven.
So we had, I think, thirty-five thousand in there, I think. And we didn't spend all of it, so I reduced that expenditure line by the twenty-six-five, twenty-three. So we're saving money. Again, all expenditure from post-intervention period, so all bills were paid all the way up to.
Okay, so, under, uh. New business item A, I would entertain a motion to approve. Item A on the new business, which is a resolution twenty-two-five dash thirteen. A resolution approving the final budget, budget adjustment. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Yes.
I'll make that motion as you're ready. I'll sit, please. Counselor Baker?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Crawford?
Aye.
Counselor Newflop?
Aye.
Counselor Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I'm being heard, uh, new business is resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen. It is a resolution approving the final quarter financial report. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget. This is a quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, on that track.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so this is the fourth quarter packet. And on the front page is the actual, uh, cash balances after, uh, everything was posted in balance. And I wanna start with general fund, so when we started last year. We had, you know, we balanced, we put our budget in, and you know, when it, you won't really know where expenditures and the revenues are going to fall. But this particular year, we received five-point-three million in revenues, and then. The transfers out and the expenditures and the change in the balance, she still put us at one-point-five. Uh, revenue increase to our cash balance, so we actually have an increase of one-point-five million. Okay, so our cap in general fund has continued to grow, um, this is reflecting the fifty thousand dollars to the emergency. As stipulated, if there's more revenue than there is expenditures, we will transfer the fifty thousand, and so I did use that because the revenues aren't.
That was on top of the one-forty?
So, yeah, so if you look at that line, if you look at the emergency fund line, which is, uh, thirty on that sheet. You'll see where the beginning balance was at a hundred and fifty, and then you'll see that transfer in at fifty thousand right there. Okay, and then he spent thirty, and that leaves the ending cash balance at one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. So you can see that going in and out.
And that's the emergency fund.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's what I'm cutting loose with.
Yeah.
They didn't go wild.
Looks like we've been there.
Counselor Crawford.
Uh, Joey, have we, have you received any refunds from FEMA stuff that you've worked from the last year's part?
We haven't received yet, we have a notice of obligation where they've given us three-quarters of a million, you still have to match two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's Department of FEMA, they'll give you three-quarters of it, then you gotta pay them a twenty-five percent. That's something we have to think about eventually, actually waiting for. John Lee from Homeland Security to get back with you, because I'm hoping I can match that two-fifty with any kind of labor equipment. There, there's a possibility there, depends on each job, what we're doing. So like, stuff at the sewer line, I can't touch that, that is required to have an engineer, period, by law. You know, I can design it, you can design it, but we have to have an engineer, that has to be contractor built, but. Things like walkways and park, doing flood prevention, stuff like that, I can do with our own stuff, so we're waiting for a clear answer.
But you haven't received any cash at all from last, you know, up to this day? We're just gonna try to trade it out with it?
We're gonna try to trade up here, our twenty-four percent, in kind.
Do you want me to go down all the funds? You have questions on them?
Tell me about twenty-eight.
Okay, twenty-eight.
The gas tax.
So twenty-eight is the gas tax fund, uh, the gas tax we actually received is very minimal. But this is the fund that I use for the road, for the hit, Joe, map grant and, um. L-two-hundred, all the co-ops, T P F, all of your grants that are related to the road. All the monies go in there and all the expenditures come out, which is why you saw those budget adjustments.
That's what, and it's under gas tax?
Yes, so, so if you look, if you wanna look at that actual fund, that is on the page.
No, I just wanna know what it was.
Right, but I mean, you can see those expenses, you can see the revenues listed in the rule of queue, and that's on page thirty-five and thirty-six. So if you turn to page thirty-five, you can see the revenues coming in, and then you can see right there. Gas tax one penny and gas tax, tax two pennies, the maximum amount we've received is maybe, uh, sixteen dollars. But the rest of the revenue that comes in there is from his grant monies he gets from.
But the gas tax, that comes off gas, actually.
Mm-hmm, on the sales from the Circle K and from Shallow.
Oh, okay.
We get a one cent and a three cent. So in the whole year, we, we receive, it looks like this year we received eleven thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's minimal.
Okay, okay.
And then on the other side of those expenditures, and you can see where I have those budget adjustments that you were asking me about. If you look at the budget, you see how close they are to being in, in a hundred percent, which is where they should be. Which is why I made those changers, so these all look very close to being in line with budget.
So on that page thirty-five?
Yes, sir.
Nearly everything on there is grant stuff?
Uh, everything but, uh.
The, the gas tax?
Yes, everything else is, is, uh, well, the first line is interesting. Sure.
Right.
So, but, the rest of that is all grant money. So, but the rest of that is all grant money.
Anything else on this item? Counselors? I'll put my hat back on, I'm glad it's free. Father my eyes ever since I had cataracts, years ago. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve item B on our new business. Which is a resolution twenty twenty five. It is a resolution approving the final quarter financial report. For fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. It's quarter ending June thirty of twenty twenty five.
I'll make that motion as red. Second.
Counselor Nuffa?
Hi.
Counselor Miller?
Hi.
Counselor Baker?
Yes ma'am.
Counselor Proctor?
Hi.
Washington Carey?
Next item under uh new business. Item C, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen. It is a resolution adopting fiscal year twenty twenty six final budget for all funds. In application to the local governor, government division. Of the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. For the uh approval thereof.
This packet that has this colored sheet in front is the final. On this, if you notice, there's a couple of things, one, I didn't change anything from. Preliminary to final, except for the beginning cash balances, and those beginning cash balances. Are reflected in your ending cash balance over there. Like it's rounding, but I mean, it's within a dollar of the, of the down, so the beginning cash balance. Will be equal to the ending cash balance over there. So I changed those because those are actual figures now. And if you notice, because we estimated five twenty eight would have a million, I think I had a billion something in there. But for ending cash, and it really only has seven hundred and eighty one thousand. So this puts five twenty eight in a deficit of two hundred and sixty six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, I discussed this with Joey. And I. I'm asking permission after discussing with Joey. If I can reduce the expenditures uh on page twenty five on your guide. Um, it would be in the, the one behind the colored sheet. That's your budget. They're two different things. On page twenty five, on that, on twenty eight forty four forty thirty five. There's five hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and eighty dollars in there. And I need to reduce that down by two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. And they not put down, won't be in the red, yes, they will not accept that going in the red, they just won't. So.
You good with that, Joey?
Yes, we went over the numbers and work, went over the game, and we've been continuing. All it is, some of the stuff, we've spent some money, we haven't spent some, you know.
And this is an estimate on what, what's coming or what's not, so. The other thing I need to discuss with you is the um two hundred thousand dollars for the PD's car. Now, that's true, that's a problem. And I know they need to reinvent it, so I've asked permission. Uh, to add two hundred thousand dollars, it'll be reimbursed, so they spent the money and then we get reimbursed. So because we have to spend the money, when they can reimburse, I'm going to put it in general fund. And I've chosen two lines to add two hundred thousand dollars to. So for the revenue coming in, I would like to add it to ten thirty six, three sixty, fifty seven. And I, I'm not sure that's on your uh budget by levels, because I don't have anything in it. So I, I'm gonna add to two, two hundred thousand dollars in the revenue. And then I'm gonna go in it and put the expenditure under ten eighty four, ten ninety, for two hundred thousand.
You're just gonna put it in the general fund, let them spend the money and they give you the money back?
But I have to show it as a revenue and then it has an expense. And these are the two line items that I wanted to use, so that it won't affect our cash flow, because we've got a lot of money in general.
I'm good, y'all good with that too?
Any other thing I wanted to discuss is I know that all the. When Eric came up and asked for a cost of living raise. And they asked for a dollar fifty per individual. And I didn't want to ask for anything until your insurance was spent, see where our cash. Where our cash flow was and if we had enough money to cover it. And knowing that we ended up at one point five in the black, in general fund, I did wanna ask. For the eight employees to get the dollar fifty raise, which would be a total of twenty four thousand nine sixty. And then estimating uh taxes on that would be three thousand four forty, four hundred, three thousand seven hundred and forty four dollars. Which would be a total of twenty eight thousand seven hundred and four dollars for the year.
Can you name the positions?
Yes. So that would be. My position. Um, the city clerk, the deputy city clerk, the finance clerk. But the H R position, the planning and zoning director, the planning and zoning assistant. And the janitorial.
This is done across the board?
We did straight across the board.
For all the employees?
Just administration.
Because all the other departments got raised. Yes, sir, I'm only asking for what everyone else did.
That guy didn't get that, that guy. Thirty cents.
No, all of the boards got it.
Yeah, I'm gonna be fair on all this, I don't want.
No, I agree. Do you want me to put it, I'm sorry, I was just.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't mean. Did you wanna put it in for your department as well?
If we can, sure.
There's love, there is love, I mean, it complements it back to everyone's.
I'm concerned about. Two catastrophes in a year and how that's going to affect. All of our city. And if we do this.
I'm just asking because all the other departments stand in for it. Cost of living, the development. And I hate to say it, but it goes straight past.
Do you have a crystal ball?
But I can tell you, we do have one point five million dollars, which is end up in the black from the end of June thirtieth. And I'm asking for. Twenty eight thousand. Again, I mean, it would be another three dollars times twenty eight, it would be another six thousand. So you're looking at thirty five thousand dollars.
You want us to give a raise, now we're putting on the agenda or nothing.
It's in the budget, this, this is the discussion.
I understand that, but there were times that we wanted, throw something in here, that's always thrown back to us. It's gotta be on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, so it isn't defined budget for discussion.
We don't say nothing in here about giving nobody no raise.
That's because all the reasons we're giving are in the dictionary. And I was gonna wait until the end, see if there was a cash flow to cover. Eric?
One thing that bothered me. I've never seen administration, not every employee be there five days a week. I understand police have to do it in different ways, I understand. Joey's department having to do it a different way, but I think it's very important. That administration is there in that office Monday through Friday.
We have people in any.
I don't want people, I want every position. I don't, I've never seen that before, and I've been on the city council a long time.
Counselor Proctor?
Yeah. Okay, we're talking about the hours and stuff working that uh, Councilor Miller got up. You gotta get a call, get an answer in, or get somebody to help you seven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock, and. They're doing other things, they're getting things called up for the event, that office is supposed to be open. An hour a day. You're working at ten hour a day. And that's what they're supposed to be on, and then they're claiming that lunch break. See people leaving, going different times, I don't want things like that. I'd just like to make this comment, anyone making over seventy two thousand dollars a year. Uh, I, I think that uh. Cost of living in one house is uh, should be for the people that's under that.
I like that one, thanks. But you did give a dollar fifty to public works employees that make that.
Yeah, and if y'all wanna go down there at midnight, jump a mud and muck. Give you all.
Working in the river, it's got sewer pumping in it.
Again, I am asking, I am asking the state's municipal board for all the employees, as you did the other department.
I always say it's there, here, Monday through Friday.
That uh, Councilor, let me uh, try to help you out a little bit on that, hope that will explain it. At one time, council meetings. Were five thirty. That's a good time to have. But I changed those back because. We were getting hammered with overtime. Because the workday ended, but so there was too much overtime. Wanting to uh employees. So uh, I went to pump that. In lieu of overtime. And, and uh, but we got the um, group, the previous council. I got the council meetings at uh, what was Ali? Okay, two o'clock. That eliminated little problems that was having with that particular issue. The administration said didn't, it didn't eliminate all the problems that a mayor has, but that one. That, that really helped. So now uh, this council wanted to go back to five thirty. Which I allowed, but it only agenda when we did that. First state statutes and this kind of things. I cannot tell them, because we went from overtime. To comp time. I can't tell these employees, I'm not gonna let you off. So that's the position I'm in. Uh, I was told that we would go back to. The five thirty. If we weren't getting more people. Uh. But we didn't get more people, we actually got less people, which I didn't expect. But anyway, that's what's happened on there, just so you'll know.
Yeah.
A lot of. I hire uh wage employees on salary, and they don't get kind of time for overtime.
Well, okay, I think, and I. We have a new attorney, but I don't think that legally. Probably the state of New Mexico's gonna be talking to me. If I start telling them, oh, we're not gonna give you an overtime, and now we're not gonna, we're not gonna compensate with it, I don't know. We'll check with our new attorney, we'll give her a, maybe she didn't, up a seven on that.
All the years I've been here, on this council. Every employee in the office who's here Monday through Friday. And like Mary's off on Mondays, Ally's off on Fridays, there are two top people in. Okay, they work together three days a week, not five days a week, because they're off on different days. And I don't understand that, and you need to talk to the financial director, or you need to talk to the clerk, they're home. Yet, you know, that's not fair to our residents, I stand up for our residents. They're not there.
Give us a chance for me to check on that, because I remember not too long after I became mayor. I think that I was going to do what you're saying. I was told, mayor, you cannot do that, first state statutes. So would you uh maybe pull it just a little bit, let us find out? And, and uh, and that won't will know for sure.
Well, let's hold off on raises until we have a full. Administration here, five days a week.
Okay, I'm, I can't see punishing the, the people that make under a certain amount that get paid hourly. The people that draw the salary, that's a different story. They're, you know, get to pay the same whether sitting here for a month or a month and a night, or whether they get out here at ten minutes to six. So that's what I'm getting at, is the only person here that's probably hourly that's still here would be. Uh, our chief, I don't know if he's salary, uh, or by the hour, they break them down by the hour. But uh, but it's a salary, they can't go over that, and so that's why I thought I'm getting that. And I'm gonna stick the bottom to put out of Waldo.
Counselor Lacewell?
I'd just like to clarify that these elected officials up here are speaking for the citizens, and it's the citizens who asked to have the meetings moved to five thirty now, council.
I didn't have a problem with it, we moved it.
I'm just clarifying, you said that we wanted it, our citizens wanted it, and they asked us to take care of it.
But you know, you make statements like that, our citizens, uh, this, yada, yada, but. There were fewer coming. Than, than uh, the way we had it before. It was actually fewer, that's the part.
Because we're not well over here.
So there wasn't uh, I, I didn't expect that, but we weren't, Counselor Proctor's expressed this, we. People don't go to the meetings.
Well, I, what I recall, when the meetings were at two, people were coming and complaining about the time.
Yes.
Moved into five thirty, and they didn't have to complain about it.
Working class were not able to.
And city clerk wants to get us back on track. But I agree with Counselor Proctor, if you, if you wanted to make it a motion like that, Counselor Proctor, I think, Your Honor.
Mr. Behrs?
Yes. I'd like to point out that all the departments were courted.
That's right.
And they still got the dollar fifty raise, including all the supervisors, directors, and all of that.
Somebody make a motion, let's vote on it.
There is a reason that they have to do that, there's a reason.
Well, let's go, let's go to item C, there's a new business, uh. I would entertain a motion to approve. Item C, resolution, resolution twenty twenty five dash fifteen. A resolution adopting fiscal year twenty twenty six final budget for all funds in application. To the local governor, government division of the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. For the approval, approval thereof.
Mayor? We have resolved the budget, we haven't finished the discussion, these people are asking for overviews, and if we just go straight into this vote and bring it up.
Counselor, I said that she's ready to get on, but. But why are you still a man?
Counselor Proctor came up with a. An idea that if we, if we don't do something, then the janitor doesn't get a raise. And, and either does. The clerk in the planning and zoning department that makes fifteen dollars.
Could I ask, can I ask Counselor Lacewell to speak up a little, I'm having a hard time hearing?
I'm sorry.
So um, we're discussing the fact that if we go ahead and vote on this without making a decision of giving raises to some of these people that were mentioned. Then nobody's gonna get anything.
And, and what are you voting on that you haven't, what are you voting on, what do you think you're voting on right now?
The vote is to approve the budget, but before we approve the budget, the finance director would like to give certain people raises. The any individuals in the department that did not receive. The dollar fifty cost of living during the preliminary budget that all other departments received.
Except for that guy. So it's not all.
Well, we're including him right now. I just added him in.
So what should we do, Ms. Wonder?
Okay, so first of all, speak one at a time and speak a little clearly for me, please, so. I think what you're saying is the, and Mary, please confirm this for me. Is that the twenty twenty five dash fifteen resolution, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty six final budget. Does include a raise that was not included in the preliminary budget, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, no, what I am saying is, the preliminary budget. It raises to all the departments, with the exception of the administration, planning and zoning and fire. They all got cost of living of a dollar fifty. And that passed and started July one. I wanted to wait and ask for the dollar fifty cost of living raise. I wanted to wait and ask for that until after I balanced. The books to see if there was any, um. If we ended up in the black revenue wise in our cash balance, and we did, we ended up in the black one point five billion dollars. I am asking for, including peace department, no more than forty thousand dollars for the full year. To give these individuals that did not get the dollar fifty cost of living raise. In the preliminary budget.
Okay, so you are. You have in fact included some raises. You have in fact included some raises that in this particular resolution that were not included in the preliminary that was passed in May. Um.
Yeah.
Because you're in a black situation.
Yes, and everyone, all the other departments got their cost of living raises except these.
Right.
Individuals.
Okay, when is this, um? Is this the final budget that is due to local government?
Yes, it is.
And when's it due?
Thirty first.
Okay. So in other words, they have to make a decision this evening, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Bring it up. I mean, we can adjust. We can amend the budget all year long. It has to be done by resolution.
Right.
But I'm asking, I'm asking to submit it in the final since the preliminary already gave all the other departments their cost of living reasons.
So that's, so, um, I. Counsel, I think that's, I think she's explained it. Um, she's included numbers that include a cost of living. Um, given that. Uh, you ended up in the black, so it's a policy call on your part. Um, do you want to give across the board cost of livings or do you want to exclude certain parties? I think what she's indicated is that. Given that the, the city is in the black. Um, she has included cost of livings for all employees. Am I stating that right, Mary?
Action was yes, man.
Okay, sorry about that. I, it skipped. Okay. So I think it's a policy call on your part. Um. It's, it's just, um. It's just math and it's not a legal call, but I, I just wanted to make sure I understood. It's policy. So you have to decide. And you now know that you have a, you have a, a deadline of July thirty first, so you'll have to take action this evening.
So how do we split it up now?
Hold on, hold on.
Well, you, you can, you can make a motion to pass the budget as. As presented and Mary, does the as presented budget include the across the board, uh, cost of livings?
Councilor Pro.
Okay, I made a comment earlier on. That anyone's. Making. Over seventy two, or over seventy two thousand, I'll be included in that. I mean, seventy two thousand and above eighty thousand. Uh, says a seventy eight thousand. I think that, uh. That's a substantial. Wage for a city this small. And I think the, uh, the other people that. That they should receive that. Dollar fifty per hour. As a, uh, cost of living.
And I second that idea.
But we don't have a list that shows. Who we're going to give it to and who we ain't.
It's not who.
It's not who you give it to. It's the money. Any person making seventy, under seventy two thousand dollars gets. In the eight people that they've got. So many eight people we're talking about.
The only question I have is, does that mean the ones that you gave to in the preliminary that made more than seventy two, who they lose their dollar fifty?
Who are we talking about?
There's quite a few.
Being somewhere in there where y'all actually were.
There's quite a few.
I will just say that I, I disagree with the. Above seventy two because certain positions. Require a lot more than a guy that makes fifteen dollars an hour more than rest. There's a lot more to their job than. We're the reason we make what we make when we deal with it.
Needs to be heard.
Everything's more expensive, guys. Everybody knows that. It's up to y'all. I think it's fair for everybody to assume. It is. I'm for that.
I just have a thought whenever I go into certain departments and they're hiding behind a computer and trying to get up, say, sir, can I help you? I got problems with that. I just made a re- re- recommendation, okay? You want those stones at me? Start throwing. If not, just. We'll make a motion. Accept it and move on and we get done what we need to get done. Or. Bring it up or go on like it is. Make the motion.
Does the motion need to be, just when.
Let's, let me say a little something. I had to do what, uh, we always. Say, didn't. We have some really outstanding. Qualified, marked employees. There are other entities. Uh, that are going to pay people more. So just once you consider that. We'd hate to, we, we would hate to lose.
We got two in every hole. We can lose one.
Well. That's the, that's here. The mayor. Or citizens out there. Mayor makes twelve thousand a year. That hardly pays my gasoline. To some of these meetings and running around and this kind of thing. So, uh.
Fifteen.
Councilor Laseweb at one times said, uh. Well, I thought, I thought the mayor was making, I thought the mayor was making about fifty thousand. No. The mayor makes twelve thousand. Actually, I almost, uh, got that cut because I told my wife, I said. Of course they'd pay me what I'm worth. And she said, I don't think you can take that cut. That went over, uh. Some heads, I think.
I was just. Since we got all this money, do you want to do your deal?
I feel sad.
When you wanted to do with the, the mayor and the councilman?
And the judge? Oh, I did.
This is the last chance you got to do it.
I did. I felt like I.
Okay, can I do a little horse trading here for you? You have to change the ordinance, judge.
We have to change it.
We can do it.
The mayor.
Okay, but. Okay, how about if we give you the buck fifty? And y'all go along with what she wants to do with the mayor and the councilman? I'll go for it.
And the judge.
And the judge.
That's also.
Don't make everybody happy.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, we talked about that.
Well, I don't think. It's obvious. At twelve thousand a year, I didn't do this for the money. And I can tell you. Uh, as far as me, I don't want a raise. I don't want any extra.
Here, here. I, I, I would probably agree with you on that one, those percent. The mayor's position doesn't need another raise. Doesn't need to be. Well.
And I, I hope it. Where'd they go on? I thought the mayor's position actually. Wouldn't be a bad situation, uh, although I think it's good to have the twelve thousand because there are expenses. That kind of come up mileage and this kind of thing. But, uh. I feel like mayors shouldn't get paid at all. It should be. Uh, the love of the community. Uh. I wouldn't have done it for nothing, but. The pay was twelve thousand.
Well, when I started here in ninety two, we got twenty five dollars a meeting. I donated, donated mine to the place. Now we get two hundred dollars a meeting. I do four events a year. I spend my money there. Every event I go, maybe two to three hundred dollars. So I spend the money I make here back in this city. I don't know who else does that. But I do and I have.
And I'm not, the councils, if you want to do that fine, I.
I don't, I don't, I'm not a good qualified judge. And a thousand dollars a month. Doesn't let a keeper.
And Ms. Miller's been wanting to do this for a long time. It just didn't pop up.
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor, councilors, if I might interject, I'm going to guess that your salaries are set by ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so you would have to have a separate agenda item to, to tinker with the. With the salaries. In other words, it's not on your agenda this evening, so it's really not something that you can. Decide this evening because it's not. On the agenda. Um, but it's certainly, it's certainly within your purview to change up the salaries.
That wasn't on the agenda tonight either. It isn't raised.
Because they're raised. The only difference is that.
It doesn't say anything about raises.
No, it doesn't. You have to change.
There's been many raises, given that we did not know anything about.
I mean, no word in that doesn't say that.
It doesn't because I brought it before you, showing you you have.
I, I, I understand your point, but my point is every time we come in here and we want to talk about something different, it has to be on the agenda. They hold our feet for the firing. So I don't think the rules need to be there.
This isn't a rule for. You want to change the salaries and it's for ordinance. It needs to be changed for. That's all she said.
We've got to be able to get something on the agenda first. We define to do it.
Let's, let's stick, let's stick to item C, please, if we can, so we can get this resolved here. Waiting on when you are to make a motion. I'll retract, I'll, I'll retract the decision I just made just to get this over with to keep everybody from getting into a fishing contest. Here at the council. And if everybody else got to pay raise, give these people a pay raise, go on. But I don't want to see more pay raises coming across for, I mean, it makes over a certain amount of money. I'll pay that right now.
Uh, Mayor, I might also add that this is, this is for the twenty twenty six budget, correct, Mary?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. So I'm going to guess that with the election cycle coming up, that a lot of the folks that you're talking about. That Mary's talking about giving a raise. Um, there will be some changes in positions. Some of those folks won't be here anymore, so. This pay raise doesn't just apply, or does it just apply to the current employees, Mary, or will it apply to future employees?
Well, it's because of the current employees and I believe if the budget is changed, it would go to the job description. But there's a range, so it wouldn't be if you got somebody hard, somebody new, you have a range. You don't have to hire them below.
Gotcha. Okay, so.
Too much, yeah.
Okay, so this, this budget, this, this, this proposal that you're talking about. Um, would apply to current employees for the term that they have remaining in their employment with the, with the city.
That is correct.
Okay. So again, I would just say, Mayor, there, you know, with the election cycle coming up. Um. It, it could be that some of the folks that you're talking about this evening won't be here five or six months from now. Just, just food for thought.
So we have a motion on the table?
I'm like, close. No.
Yeah, I make the motion for resolution twenty twenty five fifteen, resolution adopting fiscal year twenty twenty six, final budget for all funds. Not occasion the local government division, the Mexico Department of Finance and Administration for the approval thereof. Dollar and a half for everybody, for the eight people that didn't get it. And let's move on.
Ten.
Fire department.
Ten, I'm sorry. Ten. Didn't we leave you out for a party?
Okay, we had, uh, we had a motion.
I'll set the map.
And second, go call, please.
Councilor Bayton? No. Councilor Baker?
Nope.
Councilor Miller?
No.
And Councilor Proctor?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Wait, I have to turn down the final budget, guys. I can't, that's the only thing. Well, it's through that thing. It's not on, it's not on the agenda.
Hold on, see, buddy.
Uh, so. The motion was to pass the budget with the, with the, um, with the raises in it. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So there are alternative motions that could be presented, which is pass the budget without the raises. And I would recommend that. Uh, you consider that, given that Mary has to submit this before the end of the month.
So you want us to make another motion?
Uh, you can. I mean, I, I, I would highly recommend that you get your budget out the door today.
I'll make a, I'll make a recommendation. To the item C. Less than all fifty per hour raise and we pass the budget as is.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and say.
Councilor Bayton?
Aye.
Councilor Baker?
Aye.
Councilor Miller?
Aye.
Councilor Proctor?
Aye.
Motion failed.
Now we are adjourned.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Pretty bad.
No. Singers.